We are live. All right, you may unmute when you arrive.
Thank you.
Andy's gonna join by phone. He also saw the hybrid thing.
Um. He's here with us.
I did. Okay, I told him to join you and he said he was gonna get on his phone.
Yeah, Wade, if you wanna, uh, sorry.
All right, so Carol, since it looks like you're in the, you're in the select board room, when we do public comment, I'll lean on you to tell me if anyone's raising their hand.
Absolutely. As of right now, there's no members of the public here.
Oh, really?
No, just have, we have everyone from McLean and Wayne.
At, in, in town hall?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well. Uh, please share my apologies. All right, um. Let's give Andy a minute to, uh, to join. And then, um. And then we'll start. If Andy's not on in like two minutes, I'll just start the meeting and, and wait for him to join us. Okay, it's, um, seven oh two. I'm sure Andy will join us, uh, soon. Uh, so I call this meeting of the Belmont Planning Board to order. Let's start with, um, attendance. So, uh, I'll just go from my screen. Carol Barbarian.
Present.
There, Dunham.
Present.
Alyssa Todras.
Present.
Renee Guo.
Present.
Okay, we've got a quorum. Um, thank you everyone for joining us tonight. Let's start with, uh, case number twenty-five dash oh zero three for design and site plan approval. So we'll be continuing the case for one fifteen Mill Street. So, um, Carol, is the room that you're in set up for meeting or no?
You're muted.
Yeah, you're muted.
It is. I can see if I can get them online, but also they have their laptops set up. So if you want to just promote Justin, um, to a panelist, then I believe they can start and I can see if I can get.
Let's do that. Let's promote Justin. Let's see, anybody else from the? Anyone else from the team? Howard looks like is here. HP.
Mr. Chair, it's Steve Kitter on behalf of McLean Hospital and, and we have a number of, uh, folks here with us and, and, uh, and, and we'll present in a somewhat sort of sequential fashion, if that's okay. We'll sort of shift in front of the laptop and I think it'll work just fine. But, but if that's okay, we can start if you're, uh, if you're ready for us.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, and again, sorry for the mix-up. So, uh, before you guys dive in, let me just go through this with Chris. So, Chris, we've got these, um.
Your volume.
Oh, you want me to turn on them?
Yeah, so Chris, we've got these eighteen objectives, um, a number of which they have met. Um, and then we have some points of conversation that came out, that have come out of this public process, particularly around, um, stormwater, tree preservation, dumping, um, and then, um, and I, I didn't totally under, you sent me an email tonight saying that we needed some more documents and I did not totally understand what we needed and maybe you could.
Yeah, they, they still have, have to get a, uh, a final revised site plan set to us. Um, and because of, of a lot of the comments from engineering, um, I think they're probably still in the process of working on that. So, um, yeah, I'm sure it'll be, uh, coming, you know, fairly soon and we'll have everything that we need to, uh, uh, to document the case.
Okay, so in terms of like the goal for tonight, without that, can we start drafting conditions or is that a necessary input to start drafting conditions?
You can, you can start discussing conditions before or after you actually close the public hearing. Uh, but since I suggested keeping the public hearing open one more session, uh, because of the site plan, um, we can get through McLean's presentation. They're gonna be talking about stormwater. They're gonna be talking about traffic and they may have some other things that they want to, uh, address. Um, at that point, um, the, the board can begin talking about conditions, um, as long as you wish tonight.
Okay, how do board members feel about that? Do you wanna listen to the, um, the presentation? You know, obviously have questions in the presentation and then talk about the conditions?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else? Carol, Renee, Alyssa?
Sounds good.
Okay, cool. All right, Steve, over to you guys.
Great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board, and, and, uh, we're happy to be here to present tonight. I think in terms of the, um, the, the, the missing items, if you will, there really are very few at this point. I think in terms of the objectives that are listed, the, the eighteen objectives, almost all of those, as, as I think Chris Ryan's report to the board makes clear, have been satisfied. Uh, our focus tonight, I think, is on the two specific issues that, that were raised at the last, um, hearing, and those were the stormwater, as Chris said, and, and traffic. Um, and since that time, there've been some very productive meetings, uh, with Wayne Chenard, the Assistant Town Engineer, uh, and, and as well, uh, uh, on, on traffic and exchange of our response to the peer review from Howard Stein Hudson that, uh, was submitted to the planning board previously. So, we're prepared to address all of those issues. I think a couple of other items we would just make clear, um, have been, uh, worked on and have been addressed. Uh, there was a question from the Historic District Commission concerning the screening of the garage as part of the project. Uh, we had a, a, a walk on that site with, um, with, with the Chair of the Historic District Commission and has attended the meeting of the Historic District Commission last week and, uh, the, the board at that time, uh, um, accepted our representations in terms of how that screening will work and have voted to, uh, essentially say approval in terms of the, the further response that they submitted to, to the planning board. So that issue has been dealt with and as well, uh, we've worked with the trustees of reservation and with the land management committee. Uh, and you'll see a lot of the recommendations coming out of that process, uh, presented by Justin Mosca from VHB tonight in terms of, uh, some of the specific issues related to stormwater. But I believe as well that the trustees have, uh, submitted a letter identifying that, uh, the concerns that they had raised have been addressed. Uh, similarly, McLean, as a participant on the Land Management Committee, uh, joined with the other members of the Land Management Committee to submit a, a, a comment letter, which sets forth a number of, of the issues, uh, all of which have commitments from McLean in terms of how we will address those issues. So, I think in terms of the issues that have been raised to this point, all of them have been addressed. Uh, and, and now we'll deal with the stormwater and then with traffic. So if that's all right with the board, uh, we'll proceed to, uh, have Justin Mosca from VHB, uh, present on stormwater, uh, and he's here and I will shift and give him the mic.
Thanks, Steve. Sorry. Kind of figuring this out as we go here via technology, but I think we're up and running. And so, Chris, if you wanna go to the next slide, uh, so as Dave mentioned, uh, I'm Justin Mosca. I am the, um, VHB's project manager for, manager for the Site Civil, uh, Components Project and the Engineer of Record, both on the Site Civil and the Stormwater. Um, so I'll just run through our design, um, and then the process that we've had since then. Um, so our first slide here is just for a little bit of context, um, where we are, uh, for Zone Four. And there's, uh, again, we're kind of on the west side of Zone Four, we're not taking the entire thing, uh, but we have, um, analyzed that area for the existing stormwater conditions and split it into, um, what we've seen as two current design points, um, which are, it's kind of hard to see here, but, um, it's the small, uh, shapes in the bottom of this plan, uh, to the southwest and the south. And so essentially, one of the design points, um, encompasses most of the site for the, um, for the parking lots that are there and the, and the former building pads, uh, in discharges to Design Point One, um, through a, a point discharge, a pipe discharge, and then a smaller portion of the site, uh, is more of an overland discharge towards the southern property line. Uh, the site has its challenges, uh, for sure with, with soils. It's, um, some silty soils overlaying or underlaying by bedrock and has high groundwater. Um, but we are able to, uh, to take advantage of the site that it, uh, the fact that the site is previously developed, uh, with those building pads. Um, Chris, move on to the next slide, please.
Wait, before you move on, can I just ask?
Yeah, certainly.
A question. So can you go back to the last slide? So these two little white flags in the bottom, that's where the water comes out? That's where it all channels to?
Correct. Yep, so the. Okay, go ahead.
Can you just repeat what those are again? I just wanna.
Yep, so Design Point One is a, um, a piped discharge today that leads into the, uh, the intermittent stream there, the drainage channel that comes down the, um, the hillside. That is, so that Design Point One is, um, is a closed drainage system discharge. So all the existing catch basins that are on the site today, uh, within Zone Four, as well as some discharges from Zone Five, uh, come down to that point and get discharged to that drainage channel. And, and then Design Point Two is an overland flow off of the, um, that unimproved access road that comes around the, this, no, the coal road is actually further down. Um, you can almost see, um, the bridge section of it in the lower right inside the trees there. And it looks like a, a couple of parallel lines next to each other. It's kind of in the very low right of this image. That's the, uh, that's the coal road. So this, this road that I'm referring to is the, um, the road that's within Zone Four. It's an existing condition within Zone Four and it's just a, um, an access drive for McLean Hospital. Okay. And that one, and that discharge is, is overland. Um, so it's over a little bit more of a, a, a longer area, but it's, it's fairly concentrated towards, uh, where that flag is shown.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And as we move into the proposed design, um, there's a few different, uh, regulatory frameworks that, uh, we've designed this being compliance with. Uh, the first at the state level is the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards, uh, that are, uh, promulgated by DEP. And then on a local level, we have the Belmont zoning bylaws as well as the, uh, Belmont, uh, stormwater bylaw. So this site has been designed to comply with all three of those. And we do this by first collecting all the, um, stormwater with, with, within the development area at the purple dots that you see on here. Um, those are the inlets. Those are a combination of, um, roof drainage, area drains, catch basins, et cetera. Uh, so that's where we collect the stormwater. Then it's routed along the, uh, what I've highlighted in green here is, uh, the underground pipe network to one of four subsurface systems. Uh, those are the green tri, uh, rectangles that you see there. Um, those systems are a combination of detention so to help us, uh, attenuate peak flows from the, in the proposed condition. Uh, we analyze that for the two ten, twenty-five and hundred-year storms. Um, and then they also have a sand filter component to them, which helps with, um, water quality treatment. So we've designed this site to treat for ninety percent TSS removal, total suspended solids, um, as well as, uh, greater than sixty percent total phosphorus, which is, uh, in line with those regulatory requirements. And then coming out of those, um, detention and treatment systems, you'll see the, uh, the two orange dots towards the south line. Those are those same design points we just talked about. So, um, so we've designed each of the, or analyzed, I should say, each of those design points individually to make sure that our, uh, post-construction discharge rates are not greater than our pre-construction discharge rates. And you go next slide, Chris. And so as part of the compliance, um, with both state and local regulations as well as federal, uh, we have a comprehensive uh, construction period erosion control plan. And so what you see here and the, the pink dots are all the existing catch basin inlets. Those will all be protected, um, with, what, there's various, uh, forms of inlet protection. We typically use silt sacks, um, which go into the grates of those catch basins. And then similarly, as the new catch basins come online with proposed systems, the, uh, the proposed catch basins will get, uh, silt sacks as well. And then in the lower left, you'll see there's a construction exit. Uh, that's so that when trucks are leaving the site, uh, the soil gets cleaned off of their wheels. Um, I'll talk a little bit about, uh, the stormwater review with the town, uh, in a little bit too, but one of, uh, Mr. Chenard's comments was to provide, there was a recommendation to provide washdown area with that. So we'll provide washdown facilities as well. Um, and then along the southern perimeter, since all this, um, the stormwater generally flows from north to south in Zone Four. So along the, uh, the southern perimeter, we have a perimeter erosion controls, which are typically, you know, uh, silt socks, which are like compost-filled socks, uh, straw bills or, um, items similar to that. There's, uh, there's various options they can use, but the idea is to control erosion at the downstream end before it goes off-site. Um, and then there's a couple of locations where, um, we're proposing what's called a Durwaddle project, product, but it's essentially, it's a similar perimeter erosion control, but it can be driven over. Um, one of those would be at the, um, at the access road that I was referring to, the McLean Access Road, uh, so that that road can stay open during construction. And the other would be on a segment of pavement that heads towards the coal road, uh, because there's some stormwater that sort of turns the corner and flows down the coal road, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, but we got a request to make sure that any disturbance that happens during construction doesn't cause water flowing offsite to the coal road to have, um, sediment in it as well. So proposing another Durwaddle down there. Uh, next slide, Chris. So as part of this process, uh, we have coordinated with trustees of reservations and the land management committee, uh, who had some comments on the stormwater design and, uh, and layout. So I just wanted to run through those. I think, um, this group has seen them, but the ones that, um, that specifically affected stormwater, if I just move from left to right, um, on the bottom, there was what our discharge at Design Point Two was going from an overland flow to a point discharge, since we're now collecting the water and discharging it through a pipe. So there was a, um, a question about, uh, reducing flow velocities from the larger storms that the land management committee had. So we've worked with them and we've, um, agreed to install a level spreader at that location to sort, to spread out the flows and just make sure that even in the, um, the very large storms, that our flow velocities are low enough that they're not gonna, um, cause erosion, you know, offsite beyond the property line. Um, moving up just south of the garage, uh, it was noted that there was a swale that was being created, um, along the, the east end of the garage that flowed towards the south side of the garage and, uh, we didn't want flows contributing, you know, additional stormwater towards the coal road. Um, so there was a request to put another inlet in and, um, you know, we, we appreciate that comment because that was actually intended to be there and we, we just missed it on the plan. So, um, so we are adding that inlet in so that we can collect that water. Um, I already talked about, and the, in brown is that Durwaddle, um, that I was mentioning on the, uh, the existing pavement. And then there's a couple items that are related to, um, a swale that was cut by LMC volunteers to try to protect the coal road in the past. I think it was, I wanna say maybe around twenty eighteen, somewhere in that range, uh, maybe it was, it was later. Um, but essentially that swale that was cut to protect the coal road from higher flows, um, has been eroding over the years since. And, um, and so our proposal is to go in there and line that swale with, uh, filter fabric, uh, on, overlaid by crushstone and then some larger dump stone on top of that to slow down water, uh, velocity. So that's all offsite, um, on the, uh, the land managed by land management committee and trustees of reservations. Um, and then as part of that, we'd also be putting a berm across that existing pavement that's there. That's still mountable by fire trucks should they ever need to use it. Uh, but then directs water to that swale and make sure it doesn't make its way to the coal road.
Thank you. Before you move on, can, any questions from the board so far? We're okay with, um, the presentation on stormwater? Okay, seeing no objections. Justin, back to you.
Yeah, and then just wanted to run through our review, uh, excuse me, review process so far. Uh, the stormwater report was submitted with the original, uh, submission for design site plan review. Uh, we met with Mr. Chenard on February fourteenth originally to just review the, uh, the project and the proposed design. Um, and then following his comments, we, we met just this week, uh, to go over our, uh, our responses. So those comments, uh, that I mentioned were, uh, received last week. They were, you know, we found them to be generally minor in nature. Um, you know, not technical. There are a lot of, uh, recommendations and considerations that we're addressing now, uh, as was mentioned earlier. So we're updating the plans accordingly. Um, you know, I think some of them, just to, to point out some larger ones, there was, um, a request for the town to review the stormwater pollution prevention plan before that gets submitted to the EPA, uh, which we're, we're happy to do. Uh, there was a request to clarify some areas of the, of the design, the plans, which, uh, which will go in on the, the revised sheets. Um, some updates to the operation and maintenance plan. Um, an item of note that was on there is that we're not planning to store any salt, sand or de-icing materials on site anymore. That's all going to a third party. Um, so there will be no bulk storage anymore. Uh, and that I'd mentioned earlier, the, the washdown facilities, um, which will be provided. Uh, so like next steps is confirmation from Mr. Chenard that our comment responses are accepted. And, uh, I, I know he's here tonight if, uh, if you'd like to hear from him. And I think that's what we have for stormwater.
Thank you. Um, and then Chris, whoever is taking, um, minutes, can you just note that Andy was able to join us at seven twenty?
Okay, great. Uh, we do have Wayne Chenard here to, uh, uh, provide a comment or, uh, response if, if you wish.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Wayne, do you wanna use this? I'm in the corner on my phone, so it might cause an echo, but I'll go over to the laptop.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I think it's my first time in front of you, so nice to meet you.
Like, sorry, I gotta put my glasses on. I can't see.
Um. Justin, yeah, did a very great job explaining, um, the.
Do you mind just identifying yourself first?
Right on. I just, yes, my name's Wayne Chenard, uh, Town Engineer at, uh, DPW. And I'm here at the Select Board's office. You're not.
Yes, you're right.
Uh, so yes, we've had a, a few discussions back and forth. Uh, Justin nailed it on the head and, and, uh, he was right. There was really no technical issues. There was just, uh, you know, ease of, ease of reading the plans and being able to coordinate from construction to landscaping to erosion control and all the different ones. So it's really, they were minor in nature. Um, a couple of other, you know, details and things like that. But, uh, you know, I, I think they did a great job. Um, the extra modifications that they made that are, are in process, um, are, are perfectly fine. Um, I had a couple tweaks on that as we went over them. Um, so I think any concerns from the, the land management committee uh, should be addressed and then, uh, it's a matter of, uh, constructing it and, uh, maintaining it all while they're, while they're building the, uh, the site. The, uh, most important part, obviously, during construction, minimize their, uh, minimize disturbance as much as possible, keep things vegetated and things like that. And, uh, that will all probably be in the, in the SWIP, uh, when they submit that. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the, from the board for Wayne?
Thank you, Wayne.
Um, all right. Thank you.
Kind of talking here and there because we don't have the upper, but that's okay. You don't have to try it. Um, just a question on, so you mentioned that the, the salt and other snow removal materials that we have off-site. Um, do we have the snow storage locations? Have those been looked at in relation to stormwater management and are you happy with the plan for that?
Did we see a still? So the stormwater manager plan, my, my biggest concern was just, you know, where they, where they put the, the stockpile material that can wash off and cause the problems downstream. Um, the, the snow removal is gonna be a, a living, breathing, um, creature as well as they, as they, um, as they learn how the snow falls and big storms and where they push it. So, um, yeah, I would just say if there's ever an issue, uh, on where they're placing it, obviously inwards rather than outwards would be, uh, important.
And that's what we talked about with other projects, is would it be, would we be placing the snow as it's removed from the main passageways to an area that it would not then go into the stormwater management? Then we would potentially be putting those materials back into the ground and other areas.
Yeah, that's, that obviously you can't do anything with the windrows just from plowing, but, uh, pretty much that's gonna, the, the larger piles are gonna come from the, a lot of areas. Um, so we can make sure that they, eh, yeah, I, I would also recommend not, uh, well, identify the, uh, the, it's more also in the SWIP, this snow operations, what they plan on using when they're, uh, when they're combating the snow and ice and things like that. Um, yeah, it's in the SWIP, so we can, uh, um, really review that a little more in detail or check on it when, when that gets submitted.
Just also be interested in your opinion on when it should go from a storage to a removal. That, you know, what, we got a good amount of snow this year and who knows what will happen.
It's off of the garage. I'm kidding. Um, yeah, no, if, if, if there's an issue in that and it, and it's going someplace else, it's a large site on the, on the clean campus and if we wanted to review that, we can.
Yeah, if I can just jump in, it will be operational. Uh, they need to keep their areas open, so it'll depend on, on the volume of snow that, um, that falls in with, and there's areas identified where store, snow can be stored. And if it exceeds that, that's when they would have to start trucking it.
Any more questions? Any questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, Steve Kitter, again, only to, to introduce Vinod Kalakiri from, uh, VHB, who's going to speak to the traffic, uh, study issues and the response to the, uh, peer review that Howard Stein Hudson did. So Vinod's gonna speak at this point.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Vinod Kalakiri. I'm a transportation planner with VHB. Um, I was here at the last public hearing to present, uh, on transportation for this project. Uh, so what, what I'm, uh, planning to do today is to provide a few updates. Thank you. So I'm, I'm hoping to provide if. Is this still?
I think I fixed it. Let me see it. Bye.
You got it? Yeah, it's not an error.
I think it should be all set now.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and my, my plan today is to kind of walk through some of the, uh, updates and, uh, you know, newer material that, that we have generated since the last public hearing. So. So, Chris, if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So this slide, you know, we talk about what we covered at the last hearing, the first two items, the regional traffic study that's dated February 4th. That was part of the the site plan submittal for the project. Kerry Pike from Howard Stein Hudson was in attendance at that hearing to talk about the first peer review letter Howard Stein Hudson generated that was dated February 18th. So we went through both the findings of the original traffic study as well as the peer review comments from from Howard Stein Hudson. So since then, we've gone through, again, a similar process. We responded to the comments from Howard Stein Hudson on March 7th. We submitted that to the town and the comment responses were forwarded to Howard Stein Hudson. They reviewed, they did it the same review process that they followed with the original study that reviewed all the information and generated their final closeout letter on the peer review on March 17th. And following that, I know you have memorandum from the director of planning and building from Chris on on various issues for for the board's consideration. That that memorandum came out on March 25th. So that that those are the items, the last three items are newer, I guess, to to today's discussion compared to what we did at the last hearing. Next slide, please. So to go through some of the key items that that we went through as part of the peer review process. If you recall, the original traffic study that we submitted as part of the filing, the site plan package, looked at the morning commute peak time as well as the evening commute peak times. So the morning was, you know, 7:30 to 8:30 somewhere in the timeframe. And then the evening was 4:45 to 5:45 PM. So those are usually typically for for this area of Belmont, those are the typical peak times for traffic flow in the area. So we focused on those areas to make sure that the project's impacts do not exacerbate or make things worse to a point that that we would require, you know, improvements or mitigation of that nature. So that was the focus of the original traffic study. We demonstrated that the impacts of the project were manageable, limited, and, you know, it wasn't really moving the the dial, so to speak, by by any significant margin. But but then the comment on that topic from Howard Stein Hudson was that we had not looked at the afternoon school dismissal peak time, which is, you know, and the 2 to 3 PM timeframe. And and the reason for that is that even though we looked at the evening peak hour, 4:45 to 5:45 PM, the 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 school components of zone four do not generate a lot of traffic during that time because most of the students have already left by that time. So the request was to look at the the afternoon school dismissal peak for the for the study locations, the same areas that we studied as part of the original traffic study. So we went back, obtained additional traffic count data from our vendor who had collected the original traffic data. And we were able to present a very detailed analysis using the same methodology, same approach that we used in the original traffic study, where we looked at the afternoon, the 2 to 3 PM school dismissal peak time and presented the findings as part of a response document. So that those those findings are included in the memorandum. But, you know, one of the questions was like, is there a big difference in traffic volume during the school dismissal peak versus the evening commuter peak on the roadways? And and there is, you know, as as we had indicated in in the original response, as well as in the documented analysis with with the subsequent material that we submitted. You notice that, for example, at Pleasant Street, Tripola Road intersection, for example, there's as much as 470 fewer vehicle trips on the roads at that time, the 2 to 3 PM timeframe than during the evening commute peak time. Similarly, there's, I think, an excess of 140 fewer trips during the 2 to 3 PM peak hour at the at the Homestead Drive intersection on Pleasant Street. So there was noticeably less traffic on the roadways during the school dismissal peak as we had originally estimated. The accounts actually bore that with actual numbers. So we were able to analyze that that peak time as well with the addition of the school dismissal traffic. And the analysis shows that levels of service, for example, are better at that the school dismissal time, especially at Pleasant Street, Tripola Road intersection, the key intersection within our study area. The results are better at that time than than during the evening peak hour time that we looked at. So level of service B, for example, at that time compared to a level of service C that we had estimated during the 4:45 to 5:45 PM. So again, that then analysis showed that, you know, we had originally analyzed the the real peak of the area. But we also now have have the school dismissal peak in the in the response document. Another couple of questions, comments from Howard Stein Hudson related to providing a site distance analysis for any of the new driveway intersections that that we were creating along Homestead Drive as part of the project, you know, the the loop driveway that that goes around the 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 new buildings clockwise pattern. Howard Stein Hudson wanted us to confirm that that adequate sightlines will be available in the future as part of the design. And we prepared graphical exhibit showing that the necessary sightlines are available and will be maintained under the future conditions as as part of this project. There's a question about adequacy of the bicycle parking on the project. Section 5.1 of the McLean Hospital district zoning requires, you know, that there be one bicycle parking space for every 20 vehicle parking spaces. So that translates to approximately 14 bicycle parking spaces that are needed for the project. And our design does incorporate 14 secure bicycle parking spaces within the parking garage. So that's that's we address that with with the specific information about bicycle parking and the responses. There was a request for information about loading and service vehicles. So we, you know, our traffic study obviously focused on the peak times and, you know, and students are coming and students are leaving and employees are coming and leaving. But during the course of the day, there there are there is other activity that that happens on the campus with, you know, service vehicles, you know, food deliveries and other other operations, package deliveries, for example. So Howard Stein Hudson requested some clarity on on frequency and the types of vehicles and the number of deliveries per week and and that kind of information. So working with with the with the McLean Hospital's operations staff, we were able to respond to that comment with specific information about trash removal, food food deliveries, linen, soil and in pickup operations and other types of deliveries like your FedEx, UPS type of operations. So we were able to come up with estimates of what what could be expected for those non-peak times of the day or of the week that that those types of operations can be expected. Then there was a request for information about ensuring that the driveways and the circulation within the site can accommodate the large delivery vehicles that 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 would frequent the site as well as fire apparatus. So we included as part of the response churning template showing how exactly, you know, the delivery trucks and fire trucks would circulate through the site. And I know that the fire, the fire truck circulation was reviewed by the fire department as well. Howard Stein Hudson requested an update on the construction management plan. That was one of their additional comments within the peer review. And as we had noted, you know, prior to construction, there will be additional information that will be shared by by the applicant as part of our filings leading up to the construction phase of the project. We'll also need to do a lot of coordination with with the zone three to vapor to make sure that our schedules and and deliveries are all well coordinated. So that's information that would be forthcoming in the future, and and that's how we responded to that to that comment. And I think that finally, as I mentioned, since since the closeout, there there was actually a final letter that was issued by Howard Stein Hudson, saying that all of their technical comments and questions have been adequately addressed. And following the issues of that letter, you know, Chris had included some draft special conditions within his memorandum to the board for discussion and consideration related to traffic and infrastructure, one of which actually is related to the post-construction traffic monitoring and looking at the traffic signal warrant analysis and and making sure that at the appropriate time when the traffic volumes enter and exiting Homestead Drive, when it does reach levels that that trigger justify the need for signalization, that the applicant would be ready to implement the the signal at that time. So that's that's part of the suggested conditions within within Chris's memo. So that's that's an overview of the of the responses that we had provided in in the in the original comments that that came from Howard Stein Hudson. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on anything I presented today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? None from there. How about you, Carol?
No, I appreciate the addition of the information on the afternoon peak time that I was there.
Thank you.
Renee, any questions? No.
Not at the moment.
Lisa's all right. How about you, Andy?
I did look at the thing today that it said that there's a primary access through Homestead from Pleasant Street, I think. And then but it's it shows arrows from Mill Street saying it's a secondary access. Whereas I thought we said, or you said before, that there was going to be a gate or something that would prevent traffic from Mill Street approaching the zone, the zoned area. Is it, could you comment on that?
What you stated is correct. There is no direct vehicular access to zone four through zone five or from Mill Street. There will be a gated driveway between the two zones and it'll only be used by authorized vehicles that that need to travel between zone five and zone four.
Okay, so you're saying by by a secondary access, you mean it's got to be a permitted vehicle or something?
Yeah, it would only be allowed by permitted vehicle. I was just looking through my material. I I don't know what what graphic refers to secondary access.
It's got red arrows on it and yellow arrows.
Oh, that's that's a Justin is saying that that could be the construction management plan. Is that?
Okay.
Certain deliveries, depending on size, that may need to come in through Mill Street, but it would be pre-coordinated. And that would be through that that unimproved access road that comes around the side of zone four. It would it would just be construction. There's no, there's no plan to have a secondary access from Mill Street and the.
Okay, that's good.
Charlie, we have Kerry Pike here, in case you'd like to hear from her.
Yes, and then we do have a question in the audience. And given that we, there's like a lot of content here and it touched on different parts of the project, maybe after Kerry speaks, we can let folks who raise their hands talk about, I'm assuming, the specific piece. That's what they have a question about.
Everyone, Kerry Pike. So as Mr. Calicari said, we did issue our final letter just saying that we had were satisfied with the responses about all of the different items from the the school dismissal peak, which although the volumes from generated by the development are higher at that time, the the street network volumes are not as high, so it actually has capacity to absorb those traffic volumes. So we were satisfied with that information as well as the site distance, the information about bike parking, loading and service vehicles. And they provided the turning templates showing that those vehicles can maneuver to where they need to maneuver. And then, you know, continuing, obviously, the construction management plan will be a continuing discussion as this gets to that point. And as Mr. Calicari noted, needing to coordinate with the other zone as well, that's also going to be in construction. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any specific specifically.
Any questions from the board? None.
I just have one.
Here, I I muted Kerry. You can go ahead, Carol.
Thank you.
Have somebody else that's there, hang on.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. So I'm not sure who would be able to answer this, but in terms of the follow-up traffic monitoring, is that going to be done upon completion? Would it be done a certain timeframe after completion and opening of the school? Or are we going to set that at a time to be determined in the future? I just didn't know if that was already planned for.
Chair, and and the answer there is it's really at the direction of the town engineer. So so the answer is we will do the analysis when requested by the town engineer. So so we would defer to the engineer in terms of the timing on that.
Sure.
If I could add something, I mean, typically, you want to do it after the traffic, you know, after the development has been open for a little bit and the traffic has had a chance to normalize. So it might be three to six months after opening, so that you kind of get people settle into their patterns before you monitor.
Got it. Okay. Other questions from the board? Renee, are you all all set or do you have a question? Okay, Alisa? And Andy? You there, Andy? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, no questions.
All right. Cool. Right, why don't we take a question from the public? Rick's, Rick's emerging. Yeah, and then Rick, just so you know, the way we the way we do it is we usually allow two minutes for questions and comments.
Right, I just wanted to follow up on the comment that I forget, his name is Collison, I'm I'm not sure. But am I, did I miss hear about construction vehicles coming up? McLean Drive in case they're needed for service to zone four. That's that seems like that's a new concept that we haven't heard before. My other question is about the the number of the about the traffic and the number of trips per day going up and down Homestead Drive. If there's any detail on that that we could that we could have, because Homestead Drive is is a single access. It's it's access and egress only. There's no, there's a turnaround, I guess, plan. But there's no way, there's no other way to access Homestead Drive or egress Homestead Drive except through Pleasant Street. So those are my only two questions. But the the construction vehicles going up and down McLean Drive is a real, real big concern for zone one, zone one A, zone one B, and zone two.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Rick and Planning Board. This is Howard Moser from VHP. Just wanted to say the the secondarity access during construction is something we we had presented at a previous planning board meeting and it was in the materials submitted as part of the construction management plan and the the follow-ups to that. It's intended that that's only used very infrequently and if it's just a matter of very large, infrequent deliveries being needed to deliver as we work together with the other zone improvements along Homestead Drive. So it's not the primary access. It would only be used in a very rare instance. So we are not expecting large volumes to use that secondary access during construction.
Thank you. Carol, all right, one, sorry, one question. Rick, is that is that the question you'd answered?
Uh, no, well, I guess so. But, you know, there's an easement issue here and I I just hope that the town is is cognizant of the easement issues surrounding McLean Drive. And the other, nobody answered my question about the trips per day going up and down Homestead Drive and when does it become a stressful situation that the town has to reevaluate the the issues or do something more about that traffic control on Homestead Drive when it considers, you know, the 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 combination of zone four and zone three using Homestead Drive as access and egress?
So I I can answer, I I can answer that question about the the traffic volume. So the the traffic data is part of the original traffic study, the February fourth. Uh, twenty twenty five uh traffic study does include a lot of the detail, including the daily traffic volume. Um, uh, that that uh that's been requested. So uh it's on a daily basis, there'd be about four hundred and forty vehicles that would go in. And four hundred and forty vehicles that would go out on a typical day. That's that's the estimate for for Zone Four. Uh, and again, you know, the analysis usually focuses on the peak times because obviously, you know, if you are able to. Process the traffic during the peak times, then the off peak times should not be an issue as as demonstrated with even our two to three P M analysis. And. And that was just show that the peak time uh traffic volumes uh quoted by the steady area roadway network. And Homestead Drive, again, yeah, it it it's an existing condition. Uh, this this is a T M M A uh that 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 controls uh the traffic volumes that go in and out. Out of this area. Uh, the older version of the T M M A uh back going back to nineteen ninety nine had had certain numbers and thresholds for daily traffic. Um, what we have actually estimated for the current conditions is actually less than uh the daily traffic that was allowed as part of the superseded T M M A. I know that's no longer applicable, but uh we did look at the comparison and the daily numbers that were. Uh, previously anticipated for Zones Three and Four together is actually um currently, it's it's less than what was what was estimated uh back back when the T M M A was set up. Uh, but again, the system, the the transportation system in the area does have the capacity to support uh the estimated traffic volumes that we have at this time for the peak times.
So the, am I still on? So the uh, so what you're saying is four hundred plus four hundred. So we're saying, you know, close to nine hundred trips per day. Uh, between Zone Four and Zone Three. Is that is that correct?
That's. Uh, through the chair, that's that's the uh Zone Four numbers. I don't I don't have the Zone Three numbers on me right now, but uh that what I what I mentioned was the Zone Four numbers.
Oh, Zone Four is eight hundred? And Zone.
Eight hundred and eighty.
You know, so when you calculate Zone Three, that's an additional thousand?
Uh, I I don't I don't have the Zone Three numbers on me right now.
Well, I I think that would be helpful, don't you?
Oh, no, it's 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 part of the study. We we did include the Zone Three and Zone Four traffic numbers in the analysis. I I don't have the numbers on me right now. It's part of the February fourth traffic study.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, Catherine Pendergast has her hand raised. Um. Catherine, go ahead. I'm assuming it's about this part of the project? Or is it about something else? Okay.
It is.
Go ahead.
Just to just to piggyback on what Rick's emerging said, I'm in Zone Four. I mean, excuse me, Zone Two. You have to consider the numbers of Zone Three and Zone Four in terms of traffic up and down because that's the real numbers. Because both Zone Three and Zone Four will only use Homestead Drive. So without looking at them both together, you're really not looking at realistic numbers. So I just encourage you to do that. My second point is I'm. Uh, I'm I hope that you're going to have, and I'd love to hear you tell me that you're going to have a communications plan uh. Between a Zone Four and a Butters. We in in Zone in um Woodland Sewer Butters. To update us when there's going to be blasting. You've indicated it'll be quite loud and will and it'll. It'll be very clear when you're doing it, but a communications plan about blood blasting, about uh what your plans are and your timing and a sort of a regular. Uh, method of communication that uh will keep uh us as a Butters up to speed and understanding what's going on. Uh, I think Zone Three has started to undertake that as they're getting started and I encourage and I hope you are going to include that as well. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. I think we talked about the the blasting communication plan at a previous meeting, correct? Think they brought this up? And there, do you remember what our answer was?
Well, I I think it's in one of the conditions that it isn't just blasting. It's. All construction activity needs to be coordinated between the two sites. Um, in terms of deliveries, construction workers showing up, all that stuff. But I think Chris has uh addressed it in his draft of conditions.
And that community, Steve Kidder on behalf of of McLean, that those communications obviously are very important and we recognize that and the Butters will certainly, that'll be part. Of the construction management plan to make sure that all Butters are notified of of the construction activity, particularly the blasting. And and just to be clear, as as Vinov was saying, the traffic study that was done absolutely included both Zone Three numbers and Zone Four numbers. We just didn't have the specific numbers off the top of our head tonight, but but the study that showed that the system can be handled by the 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 current, the traffic system. Uh, absolutely included both Zone Three and Zone Four numbers.
And that should be on our website. For anyone who would like to look at it.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, we have one question to the Q and A, but before we put that on, do you guys have anything else that you want to talk about from the from the McLean team?
No, I think so. That that thank you, Mr. Chair. That that is our presentation for tonight. We obviously wanted to focus on those several issues. Um, but we're of course also happy to answer any questions.
Okay, cool. So the outstanding question from the public is. Um, actually, first, are there any outstanding questions from the board? No. Carol, Elise and Andy, you guys all set? Okay. All set?
I'm good.
Okay, great. All right, so the question from the public is, is there a commitment not to use S G A Rs or second generation anti-coagulant rodenticides during construction by contractors? Belmont no longer allows S G A Rs on town property. And I would like to McLean to follow suit and manage by eliminating food trash on the site.
So I'm not sure we're in a position to answer that tonight. Obviously, we'll take that question under advisement and we can provide a response, of course.
Okay.
If if you know, yeah, it will. Yeah, that's on town property. So so we'll we'll certainly provide a response. That's that's a question that we'll answer for you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Cool. All right, well, um, thank you very much. If that's the. Um, if that's your presentation. I think why don't you move on to the next part of the discussion, which is um. Conditions. So Chris, why don't you um?
Yes, I just have to go back in my uh. Share file to get it. And sometimes if I linger too long on. One location, it uh doesn't allow me to do it. Yeah, I'm going to have to go back to the start. Sorry about that.
No worries. And just to, while you're doing that, um, I believe where we left it is there's a set of standard conditions and there are special conditions. Right?
That's correct. Usually the standard conditions are general. Um, and often, not always, but often they are pretty much similar from project to project because they. They're they're standardized. They they tend to address things that regularly happen and and are. Are things that we want to make sure that we always have. So um.
So would it make sense then to. For tonight? To focus on special conditions and then you can circulate your. Um, your standard conditions to the board and post it on the website so that we can review those offline.
Oh, that would be fine.
Okay.
So let me share my screen. And let me just increase the size a little bit. So the conditions. I'll skip, like you said. The standard conditions. And starting with uh special conditions of construction and pre-construction. So I don't know how you you want to do it, whether you want to see if members have any questions about the questions in this section.
So uh, yes, obviously, let's open up to the board, but I guess. Has everyone had a chance to read these and form an opinion on them? Okay, good. So everyone's got opinions to share tonight? Okay. Um. Go ahead there.
I mean, I shared, I had two questions that I already shared with Chris. I don't know if this version. Uh, fixes them. Um, I wanted to know in number twenty four, why the town planner versus the town engineer? And Chris responded, town engineer would probably be a good person to do this. Um.
Yes, that that I have notes in my office to uh to fix both of these, yes.
And then my, so we agree on that. And then my other question was about number thirty two. Um. And previously. And I'm just saying, I'm talking about the past and what this board wants to do, I don't know, but previously. We allow the building commissioner um to determine if. All the criteria are met for a certificate of occupancy. And the planning board doesn't go recheck stuff. I don't know if this board wants to recheck things. Um, so my question was why we were included here because I've never done that. But that's a discussion.
It's it's a good question there. And I'll just say that previous planning boards that I've worked with um have um sometimes wanted to see. Um, an as-built plan, an as-built site plan, um, just to be satisfied that everything was taken care of. And then they would uh give a a green light for the C O to be issued, but um clearly, that's not the way it was done in Belmont. So um however, the planning board is uh is comfortable doing it, it's fine, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, Chris, what do we get out of this? Is it like, and first of all, what is the structure of it and what would we get out of it? Is it like, we're going to go to the site with?
No, no, unless you want to, but I mean, typically, the the inspector of buildings would probably go out with a couple of other staff people. Probably uh from engineering, probably from planning. Um, and then go out to the site with the site plan. And and basically do a a site inspection and making sure that everything that the site plan. Um, and the special conditions were all addressed. And then um what they would do is they would write up a report. And submit it to the planning board. The planning board would uh um review that and uh take a vote that they felt like the uh the as-built plan was satisfactory. And uh that would green light the uh the building, the certificate of occupancy. So uh again, that that's not what has been done in Belmont. But um if you guys would would like to see that happen, uh, you know, that's why this was written in a way that could. You know, we're certainly going to do it either way.
Is it a best, is it a best practice or is it kind of like a? I don't know.
It's it's a redundancy that sometimes can be helpful.
Okay. Lisa.
Uh, I think, I mean, I understand that the redundancy can be helpful, but to me, it feels like it could delay the issuing of a certificate of occupancy depending on. When the construction is done and all the staff who have the expertise to make sure things were built properly get to. So I don't.
Well, they still have to do that.
I know, exactly, exactly. So they they the. The town staff do everything they need to do, and I feel like adding a planning board in to sort of. Review what the staff has done. I don't feel is necessary.
Okay.
Where are you, Carol? You're on mute. You're still on mute.
Can you recognize Wayne?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Wayne.
When?
All right, I just wanted to just uh put a little little input on that. Um, prior to the. Sign off of uh certificate of occupancy, we we engineering focuses pretty much on the uh the stormwater. So we will require an as-built as well, uh numerous items. Uh, I can show you what a standard um. A submittal will require, but basically it's going to be operation maintenance plan certifications from the designer that it was built per. Per the design plans, um, recording at the registry deeds for operation and maintenance. So I I think that's a thorough way to to at least uh monitor the stormwater management completion of it. And then the ASB plans also are are serving the the zoning requirements for offset and placement of foundations and buildings and things like that. So that that ASB plan is completely uh normal, I mean, I think. And uh just a matter of, you know, who you have uh overseeing it or requesting it, I guess, is something that you just, we would want to uh specify. And I think the the stormwater should go to engineering.
Got it. I mean, so I'm inclined to um. To agree with Alisa and it sounds like they are. I don't know that um. I don't know the planning board needs to. Like duplicate the efforts of. The building inspector, right? I don't think. Because, you know, where where we add value, right, is um. Like representing, like representing the residents, right, and their preferences and um. And um due diligence for the town. And I just feel like if. But we're not, we're no subs, like we, our job is not to substitute for the building inspector.
Okay, and then throughout the process, um. Um, most contractors do it anyways, you know, identifying the locations of uh the bends and the as-bills of the water plan, the buried water pipe and. And sewer pipe and all that stuff. That that's that's a typical part of of the construction of the installation, but the important part is to get that to 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 us. So we have a record of it. And then be able to, more importantly, identify which ones, if it's public or if it's private. And I know I'm still learning about the private-public portions of water up in that area, but I think the stormwater and the sewer is all. All um town. So we just, we want to know where it is. Uh, and the designer will will do the as-built and provide a statement with the with the plan stating that it was installed as. As designed. So, you know, that's it. Again, it's just standard.
That it has to comply with our stormwater bylaw, which I don't think really even needs to be written in there. We just do it for additional emphasis that everything does need to meet.
Yeah, I would just just try to avoid any duplicative effort and and if. It's not being performed by another department, then then there's an area that it that doesn't address it. You you know, you get the fire department up, you get the border health, everybody's going to get up there and do their thing. And then that's how we developed so so. Um, but if you find something, then then you'll be able to grab your fingers and make comments on it. Okay, thank you.
There, you said you had two questions and we just discussed one of them. What was the other one?
No, we we discussed the other one, which was um number twenty four. Um, says. But all the erosion and sedimentation control measures are approved by the town planner. And I wondered why the town planner was doing that rather than the town engineer, as it seems like part of the stormwater. Management. So.
And I've already flagged that.
Yeah, so. Those those were my only comments. I think this was a nice draft. Um. And so I really appreciate Chris's work on this.
Awesome. Um, all right, other members of the board? Looks like Carol, did you want to say something?
You're muted.
Just one more thing. So with the compliance with the construction management plan, we know that sometimes things don't go to plan. We have, you know, different crews will park in a more convenient location so they can have space and, you know, end up not exactly where they're intending to be. If we could just maybe outline the process for if there are any concerns, especially from residents, those typically would be directed to the Department of Building and Planning. And then making sure that we have one point person who can address any issues. It happens on every construction site, you know. You know, you have somebody that decides to take their lunch in a different location and things like that. Um, so if we can just have a plan for that, so if there is any overflow, we've talked about. There won't be any impact on the streets, on the sidewalks, or anything like that, because you are such a unique site. Everything's really going to be tucked away in this one location. So I think just having a clear path of communication for if something isn't going as planned, we know, um, how it can be best addressed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Renee, any questions or comments? On the special conditions? All right, and Alisa? All right, Andy?
Uh. I guess not. I'm, I'm, one of the things that I think is that sometimes, as Carol mentioned, things happen. You know, what if they get a delivery at five AM or something? And this document says they can't drive the delivery truck onto the site at that early? You know, who, who do they go to for special permission? I guess that's the. In, in cases where there is actually no significant impact on the town, you know, is there a, a place where they can go to? Basically say, okay, for this one day, we're gonna do it a little differently than what this document says.
Chris, is there a way to do that?
Um, certainly, we can write that in, but I'm, at this point, I'm not sure who on the town side would be the appropriate contact person for that. Um, but, you know, certainly, we could, I could, I could look and see how other communities might handle that. And I could, I could have something ready for you in the next meeting.
Good, that'd be good, thank you.
You don't want to get woken up at five AM, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, five AM delivery is just out of luck, right? They're gonna have to wait until everyone gets into the office. So. Uh, go ahead there.
I mean, I. Think things happen, there are, if large equipment comes, they're not allowed on roads during normal hours. So they show up at like two and three and four in the morning, depending on what they are. So I do think it's a good point to have. A contact person who can work through the logistics of anything that might have to happen. You know, um, if you have a large load, you are not allowed on regular streets during regular hours. So I, I think it's smart to have. Someone as a contact person, and I believe somewhere in here, it also requires there to be, uh, one contact person twenty-four hours a day on the site, you know? At the site super or whatever, um, in case something comes up off hours.
So we can get that into the conditions?
Will do.
Okay. All right, um, not seeing any more comment from the board, I move to continue. Case, actually, well, before I move to continue, continue, uh, when do we want these guys back?
Um, I think the eighth is our next meeting, so, um. Steve, you, you have everything to me probably in the next few days, I'm sure. So I think we should be ready for the eighth, and, uh, I will circulate a, a draft, um, decision letter that will include all of this as well. So at least you can be prepared. There may be some additional discussion based on that new information, but at least you'll be ready if, 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 if you get to that point.
Yeah, and, and, and Mr. Chair, if I can just address, um, one of the special draft special conditions that we already, um, a, a, addressed to Chris is number thirty-five, which calls for, uh, the traffic monitoring. That really was, that was a, a, a condition in the original zone three, um, uh, design and site plan approval. And, and it was geared to the prior version of the TMMA, which had the traffic counts and therefore called for traffic monitoring. What we suggested was that that, uh, that special condition be replaced by the provision in the current TMMA, which calls for, uh, McLean to perform a traffic warrant analysis. Uh, at the, a post-occupancy traffic warrant analysis at the request of the town engineer. So it essentially updates that condition to the new TMMA.
Okay.
And we'll be happy to have materials in, uh, certainly, uh, in, in, ideally this week, but well in advance of that April eighth, uh, date that you've identified. And we look forward to coming back to you at that point.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll target April eighth to have McLean back. Uh, and Chris, in the meantime, you'll, um, it looks like you took notes on the special conditions and, um, and you will circulate the, um. You will circulate the, uh, now it's called standard conditions and post them on the site.
Yep.
Okay, cool, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you, do you want to give the public one more opportunity to speak tonight more generally instead of just the traffic?
Sure, let's see if we have, um. Yeah, sure.
I don't see any hands, is there anybody in the public that would like to ask a question about the McLean project, uh, in general? All right.
Okay, move to continue, uh, case number twenty-five dash zero-three for design and site plan approval at one fifteen Mill Street. Uh, to April eighth.
Second.
Okay. Um, thank you very much, Steve and, and the team from, uh, McLean. See you on the, uh, eighth. All right, so, um. Moving on to discussion of key projects and status, I think we have two quick ones here and one long one. So if you all don't mind, maybe we can just, uh, get an update on the two quick ones and, um. Over the next maybe twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we can move on to, uh, the Leonard Street project. Okay. So why don't we start with floodplain zoning? Chris, can you please provide an update on that?
Yes, so, um, we finished a draft, um, we went back and forth with the state. Um, and, um, we got them to accept our, our version. Um, and that has been circulated to you. Uh, since that time, we've heard from, uh, Mr. McGaw, who, uh, wants to, you know, take a, um. A pen to, to paper and, um, I spoke to town council today, and it was their recommendation that we let Bob go to town with it. So, um, what I'm gonna do tomorrow is I am going to send Bob a word version and let him make whatever recommendations he wants. I think we can turn it around quickly and, um, get that back to, uh, to the state, because they're gonna have to take a look at it again. And then once they do, uh, that final version will have to be seen by town, town, county, town council again. And hopefully, at that point, every party will be satisfied. But, um, as you know, this is something that's required, um, by FEMA and, uh, as being administered by DCR. And so they have their, um, model language that we've incorporated, uh, pretty much word for word. And, uh, so I think we feel comfortable from a technical perspective. Um, and, and I think from the standpoint of, you know, administration, I think it works very well as well. But, um, hopefully, we'll get some, uh, good comments from, uh, from Bob to make it more clear and, and readable and legal. So that's our next step.
Okay, thank you. And, um. I, I feel like we've gotten into, uh, a good place with this where, um, as we all know, Bob has a, has an extraordinary passion for crossing Ts, dotting Is, and, um, editing for clarity and. Proper, you know, uh, proper grammar, et cetera. Um, and so we appreciate his efforts to improve the quality of our zoning bylaw. Um, okay, so any questions from the board on the floodplain zoning? Seen none, any questions from the public on floodplain zoning? Okay. Uh, all right, so moving on to the planning board rules and regulations draft review. So maybe just step back a little bit, but like, what, what the heck is this whole thing? Um, and, and why does it matter? Um, so I think we, we have kicked this idea around, they're put together a draft for rules and regulations, and Chris has, um, provided. Um, Chris and I have provided, um, feedback on the draft. Um, what the rules and regulations are is it's just part of like helping to make the planning board run better. Um, you know, when you, Chris, correct me, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, if you do your zoning bylaw really well, the zoning is real, the zoning bylaw is really just like regulating. Like the zoning and what can be built, um, and then you would have rules and regulations that, um, state how the planning board operates. And Belmont's a lot of a weird animal in that we've kind of baked rules and regulations into our zoning bylaw, which is maybe like not how we'd want to do that. Um, because that means to make any changes to it, you need a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Um, and, um, frankly, I don't think town meeting members care that much about the kind of stuff that would be in, in rules and regulations.
I have a brief presentation, it's like six slides, if you let, let me sort of go over that.
Sure, let me just finish, kind of like the overview. So what, what I think we're trying to do is like move us in the right direction as far as we can towards like bringing the regulations, um. For how the board operates under like a rules and regulations document. And, you know, there's a non-zero chance in a few, in, you know, two to three years, we'll actually overhaul the zoning bylaw entirely, and we'll have a chance to move all of the administration. Regulations into the rules and regulations, but there's no reason to leave stuff on the table now. All right, um, Chris, why don't you go ahead?
It's very brief. So, um, this is just sort of a, an overview of why planning board rules and regulations exist and, and how they usually operate. Um, they're statutorily permitted, but they're not required. Um, at a minimum, they, they cover a board's operation, administration and procedures. Uh, they're also applicable for site plan review, special permits, subdivision control and, and other reasons. And so each board would decide whether to adopt them and what the most important topics would be included. I've seen some rules and regulations that are seven pages long, and I've seen some that are, uh, a hundred pages long. So it, it just depends upon what you want to put in there. But the, 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 the longer your rules and regulations are, typically, the shorter your zoning is. Um, they can also be used for administrative standards for site plan review, rezonings, bylaw amendments, et cetera. Um, they cover things like organization of the board, election of officers, appointments, meeting procedures, rules of order, fee schedules, decision writing, liaisons to other boards. Uh, application process for special permits and DSPR, and not only that, but also the requirements for submittal. Um, and that, that's an important part of it also. Some have codes of conduct, uh, peer review, uh, enforcement, design review and inclusionary housing are, are different things that are included. The authority comes from Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, eighty-one Q. Here are some examples, I'll send this to you, so if you want to check out some of these. Um, they range from the very, very short to the long and include a variety of different elements, so you can see how the other towns did, did it. And that's it. So, um, what I can do is also just very briefly show you, um, it's not a very long document. Uh, the rules and regulations. And I'll just zoom in a little bit on this. And as you can see, I've, I've created a lot of, uh, reserved articles, uh, for things that I think we may want to consider in the future, but I think the.
Can't see it.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Let's try again.
And this document includes what they're put together, right?
Yes, it's, it's everything that you, you guys had, uh, sent me. I just, uh, put it in, in a structure, a codification structure. So, uh, you can see this is the table of contents. Um, this is the general provision section, which is mostly what you guys sent me, organization, board officers, duties of the chair, meeting schedule, meeting format, filing and other business. Um, and then at some point, we, we may want to add our design and site plan review and special permit information in here. And we do have, uh, some appendices, the design and site plan and special permit review checklist, which is typically for applicants. And then we also have the, uh, appendix B, which is the design and site plan review criteria, which is more, uh, targeted to, to members. So that's it, basically. So, uh. Whenever you guys want to talk about it in a little bit more depth, we're ready to do that.
Sure, um, they all come to you in just a sec, so I just want to, um, highlight that, um. Uh, I think we can adopt this with lots of these reserved sections if we find that like, you know, those sections are contained in the zoning bylaw, right? So we don't want to duplicate what's in the zoning bylaw and potentially create a conflict. Um, and then to, to adopt anything, it's a simple majority of the board after a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, go ahead there.
Well, I, um, I looked around at what other towns do, and Lexington, for example, each board. Can submit their, um, rules and regs that the board decides on to the town clerk to have on file. And then when there's a new board, they submit new ones. I mean, I sort of felt. Um, that. Our bylaw under the administration section covers. Uh, a whole bunch of things like special permits, design and site plan review, appeals. And then the general bylaws of the town cover. Who appoints the planning board, how many members, et cetera. So there are a few things about how the planning board operates that I feel, I mean, they've changed in all the years. I've been on it, Renee's been on it, we've seen a lot of different. Versions of how it works, you know, sometimes there's a vice chair, sometimes there's not, sometimes, um. It just changes slightly depending on. The personalities involved, and I, I think it would be better if the board had to agree to a set of rules rather than the chair determining. What those rules of operation would be. So. Um, I had hoped in working on this, we would be avoiding anything that would need to go. To town meeting for review. So I had thought we were allowed to. Create our own rules and then determine what, how we wanted to operate within. The parameters.
That, that is permitted, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think that was my takeaway too, we just have to do a public hearing on it. That's the only, that's the only way we kind of like extend participation beyond the board.
And we have to do that?
We do.
Is it, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not against public participation, I just wasn't sure. Why if. If we're coming up with how the board operates. It becomes, it, it requires a hearing as opposed to just being a public meeting.
I mean, I can, I can get a town council opinion if you like.
Yeah, sure, I mean, there's, it, it might end up, if the answer is no, you don't need it, that would probably save us some. Time. Because public hearings have to be posted, et cetera, so, um.
I mean, as long as we're, I mean, I think if we file something with the town clerk, so it's a public document that people can see. I, I guess I felt like that was being. Public.
Yeah, affirmation for you.
Yeah. Cool, thank you. Um, any questions from the board or comments from the board on just like the concept? I don't think tonight is the night to like discuss a lot of the substance, but just this idea like, hey, we should have rules and regs that kind of govern how we run our meetings and run the board. Yes, Alisa?
Oh, I think it's a great idea, and I, I like the idea of having rules and regulations, because not only does it sort of make it clearer about how things should work, but I think it helps with continuity as there is turnover on the board. Where like new board members can get like, hey, here's our rules and regs, here's how we operate, here's how we're structured. Where like new board members can get like, hey, here's our rules and regs, here's how we operate, here's how we're structured, here's how decisions are made. I think it really helps. Just helps with continuity.
Yeah, I agree. Renee?
Yeah, I agree with Alyssa. I feel like we should have had this a long time ago.
Yeah. Uh, Carol?
Absolutely. And the last one, I mean, I saw the one from twenty-ten that was on the website that we have, and so definitely time for, time for an update.
Right. The time to refresh. How about you, Andy?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I mean, appreciate the effort people put into it.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. So it's okay with you all. I think that's all we need to discuss tonight about this. Just put on the radar. I know we've got a lot on our plate, but I think this should be on the radar for like, you know, if we can complete this in twenty-twenty-five, that would put the board on really good footing to start twenty-twenty-six and beyond. So, but who knows, we, you know, we'll see where it fits into the pipeline. Okay, why don't we go to, uh, the last item on the agenda? So the, um, Belmont Center slash zone, uh, Leonard Street zoning project. Before we, uh, we actually have a few things to discuss on this. Before we do that though, can I just like, can I just confirm with you all, what was your understanding of what's going on with the Claflin lot as of our last meeting?
That we were gonna take it as far as we could and see, see where we landed.
Okay. I thought we were gonna study it some more before we went into the details of parking. That was my takeaway.
Yeah. There?
I thought we were taking it off the map.
Yeah. Uh, how about you, Renee?
Uh, um, I think I'm, I have the same understanding with, uh, with Alyssa.
Okay. And how about you, Andy?
I thought we were building a parking garage.
Yeah, okay. Alright, cool. So let's, um, uh, this may explain why there's so much confusion. So I, I walked away with the same understanding as, uh, Renee, Thayer and Alyssa, that we kind of discussed like, hey, we're not going to include this in this iteration because, um, tackling Claflin would be a fundamental change to parking and traffic infrastructure in the center. And so we need more data on that in a way that we don't really need it for other parts of the, of the project, and we don't have that data. I think the one caveat was like, let's just keep, while we've got the consultant and we're spending money on them, let's have at least like do the work, and then we can just cut it out. You know, so that we don't include it. But since there was confusion, do you guys mind if we just like start with a vote on the Claflin lot, just to make it super clear to everyone, like where this, where the board stands?
Do you want to look at it first and kind of go through what's, what we're actually looking at on the ground? Because one thing that I wanted to go through is I actually, I went down, I'm often in Belmont Center anyway, as most of us are, but I went down there, I counted parking spaces, I looked at the roads, I looked at our GIS maps, and, and kind of took a deeper dive into what was presented by the consultant and compared it to what's on the ground. Um, so I have a couple of screen things on that.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll, um, tell you what I was actually gonna like formally move was to, um, remove it unless and until we can complete the studies that are, that show a satisfactory, like, or sorry, that we should remove it for this iteration of the overlay district.
I don't necessarily disagree with that. I think it's looking at it in an accurate way that was impactful on the rest of the zoning in Belmont Center. Because some of what was pictured and some of what was proposed doesn't completely match with what's on the ground. So I do think we need to take an honest look at that before we completely dismiss it. So that way we know what we can look at in the center proper versus what we should be thinking about for that in the future.
Sure. Okay, Alyssa?
My intention, Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you're saying that we dismiss it. I think we're just putting it on hold till we have more information. Is that right?
Yeah, exactly. And I don't think there's any way we can get that, that additional information until, um, like, I don't think we can get it before like June. Right? I think it'll actually take into the summer, um, and maybe beyond to collect data on traffic and parking. And, um, I think of this as like a pretty critical, and so, so that's, that's why I'm saying, hey, let's defer action. Not include until, um, yeah, just not include until we have answers on that. And if we get answers on that, right, we might get an answer that says, hey, keep the Claflin lot because it's like, there's no other way around it.
Well, right, that's what the more information would give us, right? It would tell us, okay, we were right to take it out because we need the lot as is, or actually with, you know, building a parking structure will, we will have just as many or more parking spots, so let's put it back in or put in something, put something else in, but, you know. But we, what we can do there, whether that's nothing or something, we need to information first.
Right. So it's gonna move that we basically defer, um, including Claflin in the, in the overlay district until a traffic, until, um, the necessary studies are completed. And so knowing that, Carol, do you still want to go through? You still want to go through information on Claflin, or you want to just say, hey, since we're putting it on hold, save this discussion for later?
I think we can look at it with the whole, with the whole discussion.
Sorry, so do you want to, so do you want to share information that you had? Is that what you mean?
I can do that now, or I can do it as part of the, the main discussion on the rest of the zoning, because it does lay into the zoning for what we're talking about on Leonard Street and other parts of the center.
All right, let me do, uh, let's go to there. Why don't you talk about that? Why don't you go to Thayer? We'll have the motion and then we'll, we can include your comments in the discussion generally. Sound good?
Yes.
Alright, cool. There?
Well, all I was gonna say was I'd be interested in seeing what Carol discovered and, um, that's all.
Okay. Alright, cool. Well, let's definitely do that. First, can I just, I like to move the planning board defer action on the Claflin lot until, um, necessary data is collected.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I'll skip from my screen. Renee?
I can.
That second or, uh, a vote?
A vote, yes, sorry.
Okay. There?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay. So just to clear that up, that the Claflin lot is deferred and, you know, is until we collect necessary information. Okay, um, so I have a number of things that I think would be worth talking about. Um, Chris, maybe, do you have things that you want to talk about, or should we go start with what Carol has?
Well, why don't I just kind of tell you where things stand? I mean, I did send you the, uh, the board report, but we do have our, uh, public listening session tomorrow night at the Beach Street Center at seven PM. It's also on, uh, Belmont Media and, uh, on Zoom. Uh, we also have a, uh, listening, not a listening session, but a open house on the seventeenth with the consultant. The consultant is also going to be joining the Zoom, um, for the meeting on the eighth. So they'll be available to, um, you know, show progress and take your questions. And so, uh, I think that's going to be a great opportunity for, for the board to, uh, to, to really kind of dig into some of this stuff. And, um, other than that, um, yeah, I think that's, that's really all unless anybody has any questions.
Cool. Thank you. Um, does anybody plan to be in at the listening session tomorrow? Seven o'clock at the Beach Street Center or online?
Yes.
Okay, cool, so.
Hi, Taylor, I won't be to join in person, but I would like to join, um, online. Um, I don't think I've seen the, uh, do we have the public notice posted somewhere about this?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a planning board meeting, it's posted as a planning board meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, cool. So we'll have a quorum of planning board members there. That's a good thing to know. Um, alright. Why don't, um, Carol, why don't we talk about the things that you wanted to talk about with, um, Claflin and parking, and then, um, we'll go from there?
Sure. Okay, so looking at, let me just full screen this, so it's a little bit easier. So looking at the over, overall map of what we're working with. Um, oh, and this is like playing by itself, so let's stop that. Um, okay, so looking at the general layout of the Claflin Street area, Leonard Street in general, what circulation might look like to go through both sides. A couple of the things that I was looking at is these parking spaces in this area are actually on the Locatelli property, from what I can see. Just doing the mapping features through our GIS map, Leonard Street is about seventy-five feet wide from property line to property line. Claflin Street is only about fifty. Looking at what's proposed, and obviously this is just, it's a drawing, it's pretty, it's how it's supposed to be. But one of the major things that I think we're missing is egress. So curb cuts were not really identified in the zoning, and I had brought this up in my comments back to Chris, but when you look at this, the only property owner who has contiguous ownership from Leonard Street to Claflin Street is the Locatelli property. So obviously we've pictured it as green space. I expressed my concern about that because it just doesn't seem realistic. But in order to get residential units along Leonard Street without being able to access the back of the buildings for cars to get in and out, we are either looking at allowing curb cuts on Leonard Street, which would result in a loss of parking and some very interesting traffic patterns. And we run into the same thing on the opposite side of Leonard Street, because we have the residential properties that are abutting Leonard Street on the other side. So I think that without addressing curb cuts, we are potentially proposing something that I don't see a path that works. There are parking minimums that were written into the proposed zoning, but I'm just not seeing how we access them. The only current curb cut that I can see is the old Bank of America building, which is kind of in this area. And perhaps new curb cuts would work. But looking at the loss of parking, if we do eventually widen Claflin Street, we have roughly sixty spots in the Locatelli lot. Those, I don't know that we have any indication that they would be looking to make any changes there. There's roughly twenty spaces in this stretch that's partially on Locatelli property. And those, I believe, were, there was some agreement. I couldn't find anything online about it. But then we're also potentially looking at these other two lanes of parking in order to widen Claflin Street to make it look similar to what the consultant pictured. So having, you know, I, I know we've talked about one, we have traffic, but it just seems like we really need to match what we can do, because if we do need to widen that further to match what we have on Leonard Street, to have parking on either side of the street, nice wide sidewalks, all the things. We're really looking at a much shallower area to build here that would just impact the overall build. So I think we just really need to look at actual dimensions of what we can put there, but also the feasibility of what we're proposing for the main part of the center when it comes to housing. Um, the other thing, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, is just in terms of looking at what we're presenting in terms of the imaging. So from the, I believe it was eighty-five feet, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, on Concord Ave with potential bonuses, I just think that we want to be able to look at that in a real scope. Um, the other thing I looked at on site was I thought of what Andy was saying, that is there an option that we can go more lateral in looking at this? And there actually is a parcel that's right off Concord Ave. Um, there would be some challenges with the site. It's owned by an Underwood entity. I don't know who the actual owner is, but that has about forty feet of frontage there, which is similar to the access points for the Bradford. Um, I think it's actually larger than what they have for access points in Waywardly Square in those residential developments there. It obviously abuts residential. But I thought we could look at something like that. This would be, these two properties are included in the zoning overlay. This property is not. But maybe if we got a little creative, we could do something similar to an SD two from our three A zoning, those taller townhouse styles, um, to add some residential units that we would actually potentially be able to see built.
Got it. Carol, do you think it's fair to say that most of the concerns you have raised are related to developing Claflin?
No, because I think that what we're looking at and what we're proposing for these areas of Leonard Street, I think it really only works if there's a way to get cars in and out, unless we're gonna have absolutely no parking requirements. But doing that without having a parking structure on Claflin Street, I don't really see how that will function. So I do think that there are issues with what we've raised. You know, I mean, this whole area here, so these buildings, that's roughly in the three A zoning. So that can be done as, you know, three and a half, effectively four-story buildings as it is, same thing with the M and T Bank Building, and even over here with the, the Chase Bank Building, you know, we still need, we need access. And so there could be access here, but again, that's already addressed in three A. So I think part of the feasibility is, I mean, and I started asking when we were really looking at this, why is it that someone could have gone up on that CBS building that just changed hands? You know, I mean, it was sold, it's sold for a very good price, I think, in most people's opinion. That could go up two stories by right. I believe it's a zero lot line on the sides and the front, six in the back. And they could do three stories by special permit. I think both the ZBA and the planning board have shown an appetite for special permits, especially if it's gonna bring some great development into the town, but no one's done it. Um, you know, Bank of America building, same thing. I think that the, the access for parking is one of the challenges that we have. Um, so, you know, again, just going a little further off the site, um, and I don't think I have this. I have this on a different map. I don't, I don't have a picture of it, but Chris and I talked last week about potential parking further down Concord Ave and maybe alleviating some of the parking in other areas. Because there's just, we, we don't have the space.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I, I, Carol brings up, uh, some good points. Um, I think these are mirrored in the comments that she provided to the uh, consultant that have been passed along to them. Um, I am confident that they will have an answer for us um, on the eighth, or at least have some ideas, um, to, to, to deal with that. I do think that access is necessary. I think, uh, uh, parking, uh, needs to be accounted for. Um, and, uh, and I think that when Carol speaks of, uh, looking at other areas for parking, I think that's another thing in my mind that necessitates a parking study. Um, I think we need something contemporary, something, uh, that is, is related to current conditions out there. And, uh, and I do think that if we are to move forward, um, ever with the, the Claflin piece, that that needs to be a precursor, but, uh, overall, I think Carol makes very good points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Chris? What do you think of the property on Concord Ave? Do you think you could add that in? It's a little late in the game, but, I mean.
I never thought of it, but, um, yeah, I mean, it seems like a very interesting piece and, uh, certainly could contribute to, uh, to the overall project, but are, are you thinking of, of what kind of use there?
I think because it's surrounded by residential and it's off the main street, I think that the, again, what I said was looking at the SD two from our three A zoning, you know, the townhouse styles. We could really a little copy and paste, a little rinse and repeat on what we did over there. That might work in that area. There are definitely going to be some environmental concerns to address and conservation will get involved with how they would access over the brook. Um, but I think-
Appropriate there?
Yes, I think housing is really the only thing that would really be appropriate there. I don't think that commercial would, would work too well there, but because it's just, it's not on the street.
I'm just thinking because it is off the street, that might be an ideal location for an over fifty-five.
I think that'd be great. I love that. But I think housing in general could work really well there, and if you did keep more of the height and styles that we had in Sub District Two, which were the townhouse styles in our three A zoning, that that allows for a few extra units. It would most likely trigger inclusionary zoning based on the size of the par, of the parcel there.
Yeah. Alyssa?
Uh, I think, I mean, Carol, you mentioned sort of that there might be environmental issues. I, I do think there are environmental issues on that site, there- Wetlands and that kind of thing. So I don't, I'd be curious to know how developable that parcel actually is.
From looking at the maps, it looks like it's only the, the brook that, as we know, runs behind the library. So conservation would obviously have to weigh in and look at what else is on the ground there. But if there's an option to provide protection for that and build far enough away from it, you know, the library is certainly close to the brook. So I think that that shows that we can have things that are in proximity to that. It would just be a question of how far away and what else is back there.
There.
I thought that was a driveway to the house up behind because they put their trash barrels there. What?
So you have the, you have the, the church, and then you have the Henry Frost daycare, that kind of yellow house. You have the house that's set further back. I mean, it's not, I don't think it's used as a house, but it looks like a house that's further back. This is directly next to that.
Oh, okay. So it's.
It looks like another religious building. And then you have the driveway. I know the driveway you're talking about is the old Underwood property that goes next to the library. So that is two parcels over.
Okay.
I went down there this morning just to make sure that I was picturing it correctly from the map.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. So may I put that on the roadmap to, or I don't know, have you already sent that over in your comments, Carol, to include those parcels? You're on mute.
Thank you. I didn't send that yet because I was going through some of the other comments and looking at, looking at this again over the weekend. So I can share this with Chris too.
Okay. Well, thank, yeah, if you don't mind doing that. Why don't we talk about comments that other folks had on the zoning bylaw and anything that you wanted to add? Chris sent out that memo, which I'm assuming everybody read. I know at least there you wanted to add some color or additional comments to what, what you submitted.
Well, I, I I mean, I think Chris has my comments. I One of my big concerns is the, the design guidelines at the end. I feel like the the zoning as proposed is pretty rigid about with how things align and where everything needs to be, which is pretty much design guidelines. And then at the very end, there's a whole list of things, including the style it should be and other things that I just think are over the top.
Guidelines?
Yes. And, and my understanding was that the design guidelines, and this may be wrong, kick in if there's a special permit, they have to, I think you mentioned this, Taylor, that if it's a special permit, the design guidelines have to be complied with.
Well, so design guidelines are a recommendation. But in a special permit, as you all know, we actually have quite a bit of latitude to control the project. And so if we so choose, we could basically make the design guidelines a requirement of issuing the second, the special permit.
But if the idea of all this zoning is to make it easier for people to develop commercial properties and provide additional density, why are we giving them seventy-five to a hundred pages of requirements they need to meet rather than just coming up with a succinct set of a succinct bylaw that they have to comply with? I mean, the first set of bylaw, I mean, the first bylaw till you get to the design guidelines is really pretty rigid. I mean, it already gives the size of the box, you know, where the doors are supposed to be placed, windows, all this stuff. So why do we need a whole nother set of regulations? And it just seems if, if the whole idea of getting this done really fast, you know, before we have all the information is to spur commercial development, why do we have a bylaw that's seventy-five pages long with a lot of, I mean, the details are just ridiculous, the color of the roof, the, all this stuff that I think is extraneous to the purpose. And, and I think it, it contradicts, you know, this, this idea that we want to get this done, make it easy for people. We're doing the opposite.
Yeah. So again, we're talking specifically about the design guidelines, right? That's the, and, and some elements of the zoning bylaw that is written. Yeah. Yeah. So I, so here on the design guidelines, I probably when I was reading through them, I kind of deprioritized because those, because they are optional, right? And so because everything we're proposing here is by right, you know, or with density bonuses. So I don't know, there's going to be a lot of situations where special permits even going to kick in and the planning board would even have latitude to enforce them. And then if, even if it did kick in, I'm not sure we would, right? I mean, I don't think that, that's, yeah, I, I just don't know that we would. So I guess the, the thing that I'm more concerned about is I think you mentioned in one of your comments about how this, the bylaw itself regulates some details that maybe we should loosen up on, right? And I think you mentioned the, the width, the, the distance between the two doors, right?
I mean, I don't know why doors would need to be fifty feet apart. Currently in Belmont Center, we have a bunch of stores like the toy store and Pat Two, their doors are next door to each other. What's wrong with that? I mean, I, I don't understand why, I think variety is really great. And I think what, the places we like the most have some variety and diversity in the built form. And I just don't think setting up these, I think being too rigid doesn't necessarily get the character we're looking for. I, I understand where they come from, but I I'm just not completely in favor of them. I think I also had some, I mean, my comments were included, but I think density bonuses for providing an alleyway or for community, for local businesses. I mean, that, that one, I think, is misguided because, sorry, let me focus on local businesses. What if, what if the, the economy's fickle? If you can't get a local business to move into a building, do you have to rip off a floor? I mean, it, it, it just doesn't really make sense. I, and I understand the desire for local businesses. We're all about keeping our local businesses. But I just think the zoning shouldn't be about that. I, I don't think the zoning should be promoting banks or other things. But it, I, I worry about connecting density bonuses to that provision.
Yeah. That one in particular was a bit of a head scratcher for me too. It felt a little bit more like, I mean, like, yeah, I, I obviously everybody loves local business, but to tie, to tie building height to that, because seems strange because first of all, what happens when that business moves on or or goes out of business, right? So now, now, what, like you said, what happens? Do we tear off a floor, right? Because they fill it with a, a not local business. But it sounds like, again, I think that, I think based on our conversations with the MBTA Communities Act, I think everybody here is on board with the idea of density bonuses. It's just a question of what they're for, right? So, and I can't remember now there, in your comments, did you itemize the things where you like, where you felt like they were too, they too specifically regulated the form of the building? Okay.
Yeah.
And Chris, those comments went to the consultants, and that included your comments about like what there should be density bonuses for and not.
Every, every comment that was made, there were a couple of comments that were redundant and, and one that I think I, I had crossed out because it, it was inaccurate, but other than that, everything went there.
Got it. Great. Because I, I, I mean, I saw some, you know, I had at least one that was missing that I thought we should use, which is senior housing, right? I think that's, that's something the community needs more of, and I would, you know, well, you know, when we get down to the actual bylaw, we'll see what the board as a whole feels, but I, I feel like we should at least consider that as a density bonus. Okay. Did anybody else want to add like any colors or commentary on their, on their comments? I know we've heard from Thayer, we've heard from Carol, Renee and Alisa, Andy.
I think last time I mentioned to you, Chris, can we go to the consultant and ask them if they've ever implemented something similar in a different town that's similar to Belmont before their redesign? And then they implemented a redesign and it was successful. Did, did you ever talk to them about whether that's happened?
I did. And, and they did say that they had some examples. They haven't provided it yet. So I'm hoping by your next meeting that they'll have that, but I'll make another note of it. I think I've asked them twice already, so I will push on that.
And that's something that you can just circulate to the board via email, correct, Chris?
Sure.
Get it. You can send it. We don't have to wait two weeks. Okay. Um, I had a couple of other, so do Alisa and Renee, did you guys have anything that you wanted to share about your comments or projects as a whole?
No, not really. I mean, I agree with Thayer that the idea is to make this easy for developers to use. Let's make it an easy tool to use.
Okay. Great. I agree. And one second, Carol, I just want to check. And Renee, you're all set? Okay. Go ahead, Carol.
Just a quick follow-up question. I know we talked about looking into some of the changes in parking that had been made around the center. Chris, did you happen to get any of that information? I think Matt was going to look into some of it. But as we talked about at one of our previous meetings, there used to be more parking outside the center and it's been slowly chipped away at over the years. Four-hour spots went to two and other changes like that. But I think that would be helpful to just continue to look at the big picture.
Yeah, I think Matt did do some, some research, and I think he offered it to me just before our February town meeting. So I'll have to follow it up with him on, on that and see what, what we have.
Okay. So a couple of questions I had was, I, I have a few like issues top of mind for me. So one is the height on the west side of Leonard. Two is how to manage or how to meter construction permits. And then three is the possibility of hotels on Concord Ave. So if you all don't mind humoring me on, on those three items, we can start with height on West Leonard. I guess I want to get a sense from the board of like, how much height is the board willing to tolerate on that side? That's probably the most sensitive side in terms of height because it directly abuts residential. And I think the current zoning bylaw allows three and a half. Is that right, Chris? Or like, no, the, the current draft allows three and a half?
Yeah, yes, it does. And then the current zoning allows twenty-eight feet with, you can get thirty-two feet by special permit.
Well, and so we're proposing like at a maximum adding, well, let me see if I can pull up the analysis you did. So.
I think it's sixteen feet, sixteen additional feet, yes.
Okay. So basically like, yeah, like a, miss a floor and a half of height. People have feelings on that?
Before we talk about that, can we just clarify what the setback changes are? Because I believe the setbacks under current underlying zoning are less restrictive than what was proposed for the additional height. So I think there's bigger setbacks that are proposed. In order to go up that high, you couldn't be as close to the rear lot line, if I read the zoning correctly.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm, I'm not prepared tonight to talk about zoning specifically. I didn't bring those materials with me. So those specific questions I can take back and, and look at them, but I, I can't, I can't verify anything right now.
Okay. So maybe, maybe then we can put this on the, on the, you know, I, I think this is something that we need to discuss, and I think we need to have a clear opinion on as a board because it has basically since the beginning been the most consistent issue that we have heard. And so one way or the other, we had to have a clear opinion on it. Yes, Chris?
I, I just wanted to see if maybe any members are interested in, in a sidewalk. I know some of you probably have already done so, but if you're interested in a sidewalk with me, if you want to show me anything, if you have any ideas you want to point out, I would be glad to do that with you. So just let me know and, and we, and we can get out there.
I'd love to do that.
Sounds good. Okay. Go ahead there.
I was a little confused by what you wanted to discuss, but since you brought up hotels. My, my concern about some of the hotel language has to do with the maximum footprint and whether you could actually build the kind of hotel we're talking about on on that size footprint, you know, where you, you have twenty thousand square feet. I can't remember. I'm not looking at it, but.
So I think those two lots, three seventy-five, three eighty-five together are, are one and a half acres.
Okay.
And so I think you can fit, I, I think they're owned by the same owner, because I vaguely recall that from the three-day discussion. But you couldn't fit like, like you might be able to get like an eighty-room hotel.
Okay, but the, but by suggesting maximum footprints, I, I understand the rationale behind that, but I just am not sure that actually works. I mean, it depends on how tall they're allowed to go. And, you know, with twenty thousand square feet, I mean, they have back of house activities, deliveries, all this stuff. And I just don't know without someone actually looking to see if you can fit, if, if you can design a building with those maximum footprints.
There, are you talking about the hotel bylaw that we?
Probably confusing the two because we've said we want a hotel in Belmont Center, or that's part of the zoning. But.
What we talked about at the last meeting, I think, is that the use table in the overlay district allows hotels. And we actually don't need a separate hotel bylaw to, to enable that.
Okay, so I wasn't sure if you were still pursuing the hotel bylaw, which would then kind of mix in here.
No, I, I mean, I don't think at this point, I think, yeah, I don't think we can do it at this point, but, and I also don't think we need to. When we last brought it up, I thought we needed to. I thought we needed to do that to enable the use table. But Chris clarified last meeting that we don't need to, to do that. And so I'd say keep it, keep it simple, keep it easy.
I mean, if you, if you have the form factors and then the use as a permitted use, you're, you should be fine.
Yeah. But the reason I'm bringing it up is, I, so I think a hotel would be a huge fiscal winner for the town. I think that would actually, that part of, there are not a lot of great spots for a hotel in Belmont, but that would be one of them on, like on Concord Ave would be one of them. Um, but, uh, if we, like, there are certain uses that it probably like, you, you would probably have to figure out the way to incentivize a hotel because as we know, like, you know, if you, um, like ma- like as we kind of talked about with Pure Coat, like, it is really hard to be mixed-use residential. Right? Um, and so if you allow both of them, that's probably, you know, you'll probably get mixed-use residential. And I don't know, there's a lot of other opportunities to build a hotel in Belmont. Um, and given the genesis of this project was fiscal. I think we need to think about that.
I think it's something that we could do. But in order to ensure the use, I think you'd probably have to break off those parcels and create a new sub-district. Maybe call it hospitality or something like that, or at least that's what the purpose would be. And then what you could do is you could have a, a separate use table for each of the zoning districts. And for this zoning district, um, you could have the, the hotel use and a lot of the ancillary uses that are typically found um, with hotels.
And what do you, what ancillary uses? What do you mean by that?
Um, like a gift shop, a restaurant, um, things of that nature.
But wouldn't we wanna allow office? Yeah, use, I mean, uh, wouldn't we want to allow more than just hotels in that district?
Well, I mean, yeah. Depends, yeah, I mean, so the commercial use I think would be what would be desired, right? So, yeah, I mean, if you, if you zoned it for office use exclusively, then that, that could be permitted and let the market determine what it wants to do.
Oh, I mean, I'm saying more than just hotel. I mean, you, you wanna come up with other commercial uses. It wouldn't just be zoned for a hotel.
Yeah, and I think that's, I, I think if you zone for like office and hotel, um, you'd get a hotel just because that's where the market's at right now. But also, um, the reason how hotels are so valuable to the town is they get triple taxed, right? It's room tax, meals tax and property tax. So like, if you have two buildings of the same size and one's a hotel and one's an office building, the town makes significantly more money on a hotel. But, you know.
But, but you have to have someone who wants to build a hotel in Belmont, Massachusetts. I mean, that's, that's the conundrum.
And people who want to stay in one.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I wish, my, my house is getting pretty tight. I wish I had a place to put in my in-laws, like.
Well, our, our market analyst said that there was some opportunity here. So I think that's something that we should, we should consider.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I, I think it'd be worth considering. I think there you got the right idea. Like, I think we should maybe, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be more prescriptive on that site to make it like commercial than allow different types of commercial. And I, my, my guess is just like, a hotel would be what gets built because that's where the hospitality market's doing pretty well. And um, the office market, as we all know, is not, um, so. Um, yeah, but it's, you know, it's a good site. It's like, it's a straight shot to Cambridge, right? To get to the quad. It's near transit, it's near Belmont Center. Like, I think, um, I think there are some things that make that site attract, like that, that stretch of Concord Ave attractive that is not true about other parts of town. So. Yeah. Cool, um. So do you mind if we talk about metering construction permits for a minute? So Chris, when we left last time, um, you, we left it at, you can do it two ways. You can write into the zoning bylaw that like only a certain number of construction permits will be allowed. Or I guess there's three ways, uh, or you could just say like the staff could exercise discretion. Um, or three, you could just basically say staff is, like, you kind of basically deprioritize it if you feel like there's a, too many have been issued already. You can basically say, hey, um, we don't have time to, we don't have enough staff to approve your building permit.
Yeah, I think those last two are probably not things that we could do ethically.
Um, okay.
So I, I think that, um, one of the things that we could probably do to get around the, uh, staff shortage is, um, is contract out permitting, which is something that, uh, is, is definitely doable. Um, the metering of permits, uh, in other words, uh, not allowing any more than X number of building permits in the district per year, I think is defensible. Um, I think it's legal. And, um, and I think there is a public purpose behind it. The public purpose is that we don't overwhelm our, um, you know, public ways. We don't, uh, have unnecessary or lengthy blocking of sidewalks and streets, storefronts and things of that nature. So, uh, it's intended to, to make sure that the, uh, the functioning of the town can continue relatively normally. So, um, I mean, I think town council said that there were ways that we could do it. And, uh, and I think it's something that we may want to consider. But, I mean, again, if you want to play the devil's advocate and say that we want to, you know, start developing tax revenue as quickly as possible, then it's going to slow that down a little bit. So, you know, you, you, you're, you're trying to achieve one goal here of maximizing revenue. Uh, on the other hand, you're, you're pulling back on it because you want to slow things down. And, and I understand the reason why. So I, I think we have to come to some sort of, sort of middle ground or sweet spot in order to, uh, to make sure we, we get it all right.
Thank you. Elisa.
You're muted.
All right, um, I think along those lines, the other risk besides slowing down the development we want to see happen is to always have construction somewhere on Leonard Street or somewhere on Concord Ave where I mean, who's to know that like every parcel is going to have a development permit, you know, all at once, but you also have to consider like, how long do we want construction to be happening? If we meter it out. Um, you know, or I don't know, do we pick like, we want to do one end first and then another end? Like, I, you know, it's sort of hard to figure out, but I think that's another.
Like a rip off the Band-Aid argument.
Right, right. Um, and it's just, I, I wouldn't want to box us into any, any one particular scenario.
Go ahead, Carol.
I think it could be helpful to look at how other dense areas handle their construction management projects because one of the biggest challenges to construction is what is going to be the impact to the sidewalk, the street and the businesses surrounding the construction. So if we are losing parking due to construction, you know, when you look at what we're working with, with the library construction and the sidewalk being pushed out, traffic being a little bit more creative over there, there's a lot, a loss of parking spaces. That's working right now because there's other places for those vehicles to go. In the center, we have direct impact to consider of the local stores. So what's the management plan going to be in terms of where is your dumpster? Can you use the sidewalk? What are we going to allow as part of the construction management plan? To let these things happen without negatively impacting the businesses around them.
I think that's a good idea, Carol. And I think that construction management language needs to be written in the bylaw.
Well, and I mean, I was, my office had been in Lexington Center when they constructed that apartment building right on the corner of Wealthham Street. And three of my favorite places went out of business, um, during that process. Three small businesses went out because they were right there. They were in that space and no one could really get to them. Um, and they, they just didn't survive. So I think making sure that we're looking at setting that up in advance proactively so it doesn't have a negative impact on the businesses is what can make this successful.
I agree.
Well, so, um, Chris, it would be helpful, um, to get a sense of what other town, I agree with Carol, like get a sense of what other towns do, um, especially in a place like Belmont Center. And what I'm curious about is like, okay, let's just say, like, let's just say we decide this is a good idea, right? How do you, like, how do you actually do this, right? Cause like, there's difference between like a building permit for a bathroom renovation and a building permit for adding like three stories on top of a building, right? One of those comes with lots of scaffolding and trucks, et cetera, and, and takes a long time. And one is, is not important at all. So even if we go down that, if we decide we want to go down that road, like, how do you, how do you like qualify what, what you're metering?
No, I think these are great questions and I, I will definitely do that research for you.
Okay. Yep. Well, that was all my comments for the evening on Belmont Center. Do other board members have comments? Well, um, and then Chris, our next, so we have the listening session tomorrow. We have the open house on which date?
The seventeenth of, um, April.
Okay. And then the public hearing opens on the twenty-fifth?
Public hearing opens on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, alright, I got my wrong five.
Right.
Okay, so opens on the fifteenth. Um, so that means we're going to get the second draft of the code on when?
The thirty-first of March, and then we should get the third draft, which incorporates, uh, board comments, uh, sometime before the open house.
So what's the second draft gonna have?
My comments. That's all they had time for because I got, I got it to them early. Uh, our deadline to get comments to them was the tenth and we, we got it to them on the twentieth. So that kind of put that behind schedule a little bit.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Okay. And then after the third draft, we'll have a chance at a final draft.
Yep. And there, there may be, uh, great comments at the open house. Um, and certainly that could contribute to, uh, some editing as well.
Yeah, I like that three.
Don't forget the bottom of God.
Yeah. The bottom of God draft. No, I mean, I like, I, I like four drafts seems to me like, um, plenty of space to incorporate a lot of feedback and also, you know, moving with purpose. Um, okay, cool. Um, well, I see no other comments from the board. Uh, let's open up to the public. So Elizabeth Dion.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, hello, everybody. Elizabeth Dion, uh, Chair of the Select Board. I don't think there are any other SLIF Board members present, but if they are, then I am speaking in my personal capacity and as a citizen, I'm not, uh, officially as a SLIF Board, uh, member because we've not, uh, clo- uh, convened a SLIF Board meeting. First of all, just want to thank the planning board for the very careful thought that you're putting into this, all of you. I'm not going to chime in much on the specifics tonight because you're doing a great job of that. And I want to stay out of your, your lane, which is, um, not only helpful, but also statutorily, uh, set out. Just a very few comments, and I think you're keeping this front of mind. The driver for this is economic. Um, this does need to make economic sense for the town. Uh, we are going to have to demonstrate that in order for, um, town meeting to, to, to clear the two-thirds vote that we need for town meeting to sign off on this. And with that in mind, I especially appreciated the thoughts on Concord Avenue. I had pushed very hard to have those, those, um, lots taken out of the MBTA map for precisely the reason that you were discussing tonight. It's because it's one of the few areas in town that is obviously, um, appropriate for commercial development. And with regard to a hotel, uh, again, RKG did identify last summer that Belmont's in the middle of a hotel desert. That we could support likely two one-hundred-room hotels. Oh, sorry. Okay, um, there are very many sites. This is one of the few sites where it's appropriate. Uh, the other things that I will say, senior housing is very popular. We've done very little for seniors. So the extent that we can address them, that's good. Also, just spent over an hour with the Belmont Center Business Association. They raised some very valid concerns and I think we need to come up with a plan to address those concerns. Mainly just want to thank you for your efforts and applaud what you're doing.
Thank you. Man, almost exactly two minutes. Good job. Um, Rena Fonseca. Welcome Rena.
Thank you. I have a, a comment and also a, a question. And this relates to your point, Taylor, about building heights uh, on West Leonard. In the zoning bylaw at the moment, which would apply to all of Belmont, not just Belmont Center, not just West Leonard, um, the maximum height that is possible in different areas with the bonus stories is not listed. It's actually very confusing because the heights are just listed for the base building. But then most of the districts are going to have by right bonus stories. So you've got to add those and then further incremental height from towers and roof structures that can be up to twelve feet. I think it's really important to, uh, build the public trust that the zoning maps and, um, the, the tables of this information are clear and, uh, the impact is not minimized. Uh, the last point, I would, so this is the request. The request is that you actually show uh, the full impact, the actual maximum, including the bonus height, including the incremental tiles and roof structures. And the other issue is that, uh, as with the three A zoning, uh, the bylaw draft is full of references to the half-story, but because of all your side clauses, in most of those cases, the half-story is actually a full story. Uh, that's problematic and needs to be properly illustrated. And, uh, any gaps in protections for small-scale residential structures.
Thirty seconds.
Right. Any gaps in protections for small-scale residential structures outside those contained in the definition of a residential district need to be clearly listed. So, uh, the, the request is simple. Chris, maybe when you're, uh, adding the comments, it's really important that we, the abutters, know, are we looking at a sixteen-foot rise? Are we looking at a twenty-eight-foot rise? That for us is the difference between happiness and misery. Thank you.
Thanks Rena. I think you have a very valid point. We are, um, in, I, I will point out, one of the things that's been very different about, um, this phase, uh, is now that we actually have a draft of the code, we're able, we're much better able to answer questions like yours and, and continue to work on questions like the one that you're raising. So thank you for the, for the comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that the, uh, the Excel table that was recently developed related to building heights might be helpful. Now, do you, do you, would you like me to make that public information?
Uh, yes. I mean, does it? Let me ask you this. Um, I actually have it up right now and I, cause I was thinking about this question, um. Does this answer the question that Rena mentioned, which is like, what's like, does this represent the act, the actual absolute maximum height or not?
Yes, it does. And so I think, I think just for clarity, um, the heights that are listed there are not intended to be added to existing buildings. The, the idea would be that if you have an existing building, you could still only build up to that maximum height in the zoning. You couldn't go that much further on top of an existing floor. And the other thing is that if, you know, if you didn't want to add to an existing building, then you would redevelop. And then the, the height that's in the, the zoning would be the maximum height that you could get. So, uh, that's what the table represents. And I'd be glad to, uh, upload that to the project site.
Okay. Um, I think it'd be great. Board members who have not seen it, I strongly encourage you to look at it. I think it is, um, extremely, I, I think Chris did a good job of laying out a lot of information as concisely as it can be laid out. Um, and showing like this, like very, and like answering this very meaningful question, which is how much height are we adding, right? So I think that's, so. Okay, uh, Jean Mooney has raised her hand. Or let's see, I think Doug actually raised his hand first. So Doug, you get to go first.
Thanks very much. Um, I'm not going to go into too many details here. I just wanted to, um, point out that I submitted, uh, a very detailed comments on the draft zoning, obviously too late for discussion tonight. But, um, there's a lot of stuff in there that I think is quite important that you look at, that you clarify and that some of them will, we need to have discussions on. And I just, uh, hope that you will take them seriously as you move forward with finalizing the zoning. Thanks.
Thanks Doug. I did get your, I actually always read your comments and I did get your comments last night. I just got them at one-thirty in the morning. So I guess you had a. I actually always read your comments, and I did get your comments last night. I just got them at one thirty in the morning, so I guess you had a. Late night. All right, let's see. Let's go with Jean. Money.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see the unmute. Okay, yes, Jean Mooney, I thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the parking study information. I think that's going to be valuable input. I wanted to ask if I could ask Chris through Taylor. If we had any type of map that indicates property ownership specifically, I know that I can go on the assessors map and look at these things, and I know we talk about. Holoka Telly owns this property and who might own these properties on Concord Avenue. I think it would be interesting to understand the ownership of these properties, because I think it can give insight as to, you know. What property owners might be looking at or how many property owners might be looking at these different sites. And I just think it's sort of an interesting study. I know, for instance, the Henry Frost site, that piece of property is actually owned by the First Church, for instance. And that has implications because that property adjacent is actually part of our our entire property ownership. And the building of that of the church addition was contingent on that. So I think it's just interesting to understand that we have these properties, but who owns them? And so the the public is knowledgeable about that because I do lots of references as as to ownership, but I think would be have more transparency to understand. Those impacts. Thanks.
Yeah, and and I think that that's something that I could definitely add to the the table that we were just talking about. I mean, it's intended to be a database of all the properties in the the district, so I can certainly add that. It may take me a few days, but I'll get to it.
Great. Any other comment from the public? Wow, all right. Seeing.
They're saving it for tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Okay, all right, well, awesome. I was positive we were going to be here much later than now. So I think that's. Just to check our agenda. All right, that's the end of our agenda. So. Any other comments or questions from the board about anything?
Actually, just one quick question. Chris, when do we need to start advertising for the floodplain by law and anything else? For a town meeting? Do we need to authorize you to kind of move forward with advertising for zoning changes and public hearing as needed? So we're prepared just to make sure that we're not cutting it too close on the timing for those things?
We we've advertised, so it's it's actually in already. So the first. Printing will be on the third thirty first and the second printing will be on the seventh.
All right, anything else from the board? All right. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Motion, move to adjourn.
Second.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.